And I will call our April 25th, 2019 Coffee County School Board Work Session to Order. Thank you all for being here tonight. Mr. President is not here right now. He will be in a little bit later. He had work conflicts that had him out of town, so he is driving back as fast as he can, but safely. And Ms. Wilpersen was not able to be here as well, so we just appreciate Mr. Lott and Mr. Dowers being here this time.
Oh.
All right.
It's a privilege to be here.
It's a privilege to be here. Okay. And with that, Dr. Banks, would you do us a pleasure of the education?
Sure. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you in advance for all the things that you allowed to happen in-season and out-of-season. We thank you, Father God, for this convening of our work session with the Board of Education. Please, Father God, continue to guide us as we continue to work to impact the lives of our students. And I pray now, Father God, for everything that's going on in our society. I pray, Father God, that you will bring a cure for all the hurts that's going on, all the pain, all the suffering, anything that's contrary to your word. We pray, Father God, that you will take it away from us. And I ask tonight, Father God, that we make decisions in the most feasible manner that we know how, and let us continue to abide by our policies that we've been governed by through the years. And I pray, Father God, that we make recommendations to improve as we go further. In this prayer, we ask in the magnificent name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. All right. All the board members, both of you have the agenda that you have had time to review. If I could have the motions that adopt the agenda as presented?
Make a motion. We adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Dr. Leece?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call to order a budget hearing for the Coffee County school system. As stated by George Law, we're required to have two budget hearings, and tonight will be the first of two. And at this point, we've prepared some budget documents for the Board of Education to review. You'll find in your notebook, the first item is a budget calendar that walks you through the timeline of the budget development, that you'll note that we started back in February with our meetings to analyze enrollment and staffing. And we had a board retreat back in February of 2019. We met here for a day with the board and reviewed the staffing and such as that. And then March of 19, we project local and state revenues expenditures. And Ms. Yawn has been working to calculate all the staffing into the new budget and meeting with directors, different departments, to look at their budgets and look at costs of doing the business of the school system and such. And so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Yawn at this point with any information that you have to share with the board.
So the spreadsheet you see on the screen here, this shows the overview of what is in the 2020 budget that is in your book there. The teacher's retirement system for FY '20, the employer rate has went up to 21.14%. And in FY '19, that rate was at 20.9%. So it's not, thank goodness, this year, a large increase because in FY '18, if you recall, we were at 16.81%. The salaries, what we have done there is we have looked at the state salary schedule, and there will be a $3,000 increase per certified employee in the state salary schedule. So we were looking at using that schedule and adjusting the state salary schedule to include the years of credible service for 23 years plus. That would be that additional step, L7, that is added on to that salary schedule. So we'd ask the board to adopt the Coffee County schedule that would include the $3,000 cited in the state salary schedule and include that stealth seven for those 23 years plus credible service.
Do we have any visuals for the board members on Coffee's other or else? Electronic Coffee's?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, this is the 2019 state salary schedule from the Department of Education's website, okay? So we will be adjusting this schedule to include the $3,000 in the proposed Coffee County schedule with the stealth L7 added to that.
The governor has approved, the legislators approved, and the budget for this year will include $3,000. Y'all read it in the papers. We talked about it. Increase for all certificated employees. So we thought the best way to go at it was to ask the board to adopt the state salary schedule as they're going to release the $3,000. And that's not reflected in that document, is it?
That's the proposed FY '20 salary schedule.
So this would have the $3,000 increase that the governor is putting into the state salary schedule.
Yes, sir.
And then would have the step 23 that we included last year for those with 21 more years of experience. So this would merge together with the governor's proposal and then what we did last year to give those folks with more than 23 years of experience an increase. And our plan was to ask the board to approve that salary schedule.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, no. But...
We actually, we operate on Coffee County's salary schedule right now.
That's right.
We're going to do away with it and pick up the state salary schedule and add to...
Add to that step 23, and we will call it a Coffee County Certified Salary Schedule because it will include that step 23 that the state does not, so...
And the state salary schedule includes the governor's $3,000?
That's right. So this will put us in line with certified employees with 21 years or less of experience, exactly in line with the state salary schedule. And then we will also include that step 23 for those with 23 or more years of experience.
Yes, sir.
So that's our proposal. Does that make sense? They are going to put that, some of the money, and I say some because there's a local piece that we have to contribute to make those increases for the certified employees.
Do we have 22 steps now, is that right? This state salary schedule you were still looking at?
No, this is the one we're going to propose that we adopt.
Does the state have...
No, they don't have that 20...
That's the current state.
We got 21, 22?
Yeah, there's the current state. It stops at the 21 right there. And now bring up the one we're going to ask... See, there's the 21 that stops with the state, but the one we implemented last year goes in that step 23. Now, the one we, the board approved last year, did have that 1% over the state, all right? This one that we're asking the board to adopt this year will put us right in line with the state, but will include that $3,000 that the governor put in the budget to give everybody the $3,000 increase. So last year's salary schedule had us a little bit above the state salary schedule. This will put us right in line with the new state salary schedule that includes the $3,000 increase. We'll make sure everybody understands that and that we're...
We're being perfectly clear about that.
Yeah, transparent with that.
There is still an increase.
It will be an increase because it will include the state salary schedule that the governor is putting out there to fund, but we won't have that 1% above the state salary schedule like we had last year.
Because we chose to do that ahead of the state.
That's right. But we have, actually, we do have another step in there for 23 years, and we're also doing some stuff with the classified salary schedule above that. Yes, and that's the next piece of it. The governor proposed the 2%, and that's what the legislator approved in this year's budget for the state was a 2% increase for classified employees. We are asking the board to approve a 3% increase for all classified employees, which would be 1% above what the state is funding. And then we would ask the board to adopt classified salary schedules that include the 3% increase. Is all of that, does that make sense?
It will in time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then the other, the other big piece, and what we tried to do was include in these bulleted items, the major pieces to the budget that are being added this year. And then there's some positions based on staffing meetings that we are adding. And then the big piece of the budget this year that has not been there in years past is this staffing of officers at the elementary schools. Y'all know, last year, we did that after the Parkland shooting in Florida, and we went ahead and made a commitment to staff the elementary schools, working with the police department, the sheriff's department, the local police department, South Nichols and Brockston. And we did not have that in our budget last year. We just made a commitment to do it, and this year, we want to include that as a budgeted item with the sustaining of the staffing of the officers of the elementary schools.
Let's go back to the TRS as well. That's something that we tend to gloss over, and I know how that works, and you know how that works, but I don't think sometimes the general public understands what we're doing with there. Go back to the TRS, and I know you said two years ago it was 14 something?
16 something.
16 something, and it had gone up a pretty good bit. I mean, in the last five years, six years, it's doubled.
It may have.
Explain how that works on the employer rate and what we're doing with that.
So the employer rate is 21.14%. So that is 21.14% of each employee's salary that we have to...
That the Coffee County school system puts into TRS on top of what they make.
Yes.
And so that's what I think sometimes people understand over the last, and I'd have to go back and look, say, five or six years, that's doubled. That's not something we budgeted on five years ago, you know, another 10% on top of what we were already putting in there. We didn't budget on staffing officers at every school. So, you know, we look at what we're doing with the salary schedules and trying to stick with the state salary schedule, add a 23rd step, bring our classified salary from 2% to 3%. We're doing that on top of having absorbed 10% from TRS that we weren't planning on, having staff officers at every school we weren't planning on. So, you know, when we get back to trying to be transparent about what we're doing, I think people need to understand the amount of money that we're putting into these things that we didn't have a choice in. They just go the last five years. That's how it's, you know, that's how it's worked, and that's a tremendous amount of money.
Yes, sir.
But we stay where we need to be, I think, with our importance.
Very good.
Other items in the budget notebooks, Ms. Yawn, that you need to walk through?
In the notebooks, they'll find the revenue, the detailed revenue from the state and the local outlined in there. And then also the spreadsheet for the expenditures, and it's detailed by each function that we've got in there, okay? And lastly is the staffing, and that's an overview of all the staffing meetings that we had with the principals. Their levels are in there.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you want to call the question campus?
Yes, sir.
Do we know how the spreadsheet would be number and need to ask for that one?
I see we got it for every other school but that one. We don't have that. I don't.
Was that not in the...
Did we get that? Was that off?
We can't get that.
Yes, sir. That's staffed? We've got staffed. Yeah. Well, there's not staffed, but we have it.
Yeah, we have it. Yeah.
Are we looking to speak to the kids in class?
I agree. I agree.
Do that.
I don't know if you, do you have that?
I think I have, Ms. Yawn.
You'll have to get it tonight.
Pull it out.
I feel like I just left that.
According to what he presented us on February 22nd, the class sizes range 15, so I don't know what they kept out of that. So let me double check with Mr. Mars and I'll get your copy of that.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. Great. We will have another meeting on May 7th, so we are going to notate the May 7th meeting as our second budget hearing. And that is May 7th, isn't it? We'll have it. All right. So at this time, are there any public comments about the budget since this is a budget hearing? Does anybody have any comments about the budget? It's a good budget, you know, with the governor. We need to be thankful to our state representatives and to our governor's office for putting the increase for certified staff into the state money this year and also the increase for classified staff. I was in the meeting last week, and Ted Beck, the finance director for the state, said that they were putting half a billion dollars in the public education this year. So it's refreshing to see the state putting the funding back into K-12 education. If there's no comments, then we'll move on with our next agenda item. While making that comment, though, I do caution because as Mr. Lott pointed out, the TRS portion is way up. The school safety portion, we didn't have that years ago, and we didn't have a step 23 years ago, so anyways. All right. So that concludes budget here at number one. Minutes from last month's board meeting. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? You'll see that one of those was the joint city-county meeting. And that was the meeting in which they updated the community on the potential for the development of the old high school property. And then we had a work session on March 28th. And our regular meeting also on March 28th. Next item on the agenda is the financial report. The first document is the general account, July 1 through March 31st. Are there any questions about that report? March 31st is a good day. My birthday. If there's no questions about that report, we'll move on to the monthly comparison, which gives us an idea of where we're at compared to the last three years at this point. And then the document number three, the detail. Ms. Yawn, are there any comments for this that you'd like to make?
We're in the beginning, the closing process is soon. We're closing out purchase orders, working with principals to close things out. So as we work through that process, you know, we will see, you know, our expenditures, you know, rising and beating our revenues closely. So we have a lot of closing processes to work through. We'll be calculating our pools starting very soon for our payrolls and having those numbers formally identified to post to our budget or post to our own accounting system.
Next item is the East Bloss report. We had a good March and a good February. We are, as far as projects are concerned, the Performing Arts Center is coming along. I did call a contractor today to see if they could give us a firm completion date. We were hoping to be ready for the start of the new school year in that facility. I visited inside a couple of days ago. I'll be very surprised if we're able to open that at the start of the school year, so we were hoping to be able to have the complication in there, but I don't know that that's going to come fruition. Michael, what would you say? I'm very doubtful at this point, but...
So what was your answer?
We were hoping that it went through in August, but they're going to get back with Neil and try to have a firm date. But that's really the last large item on this East Bloss, current East Bloss, is that project. And the high school renovations, we're waiting to get bid package back from the architect to put that out for bid for the high school renovations. We're expecting that any time. That's the East Bloss report. Out of state travel. We have one trip, the ROTC. It's going to an orienting competition. It's a naval term. We've got Mr. Gillyard here tonight to talk to us about two buses we're going to ask the board to approve for purchase. Did I skip over? Oh, I skipped the bids, our Performing Arts Center. All right. All right, Performing Arts, we did it.
All right, we recently posted a RFP for the data cabling, security cameras, wireless access points for the Performing Arts Center. We had a huge response. We had about 20 individuals show up for our mandatory walkthrough, site visit out of the work site. And as you can see, we had nine qualifying vendors submit proposals for that, and you see the rating of those there. Our recommendation is to go with the low bidder, Esselia Tech Incorporated out of Millersville, Georgia. They came down, met with a general contractor and electrical contractor today, started staging their equipment here. They're going to be started as soon as Monday, and as Mr. Spikes and you indicated earlier, they're a little behind schedule. We thought they would be waiting on us at this point, but the server room where all the cable will run back to is yet to be built, so there are no walls there. So the plan right now is to get started on this on the 13th of May. So our recommendation is to go with Esselia Tech, $43,678 for that.
And you're ready or am you due with that much?
They've done, they did the cameras in this building, and they've done the cameras in a lot of our schools, a lot of our data network. It's a good group. We've worked with several times in the past.
Were they based out?
We'll just work. So companies are around about a year and a half. Mark Johnson, he owned that company, worked with a couple of other companies that we've dealt with in the past, so we've been building with Mark probably seven, eight years for the district, so we're very familiar.
If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the revenue. All right. Bus purchase. We've got Mr. Gillyard here to talk about the bus purchases we're asking for.
Yes, we're asking approval for two 87 passenger Bluebird All-American. These are diesel buses. As you can see, the price there, this price does include the air conditioner.
Keeps going up, don't it?
Yep. Everything's going up, parts, everything.
Didn't you get a couple propane buses?
We did.
How long they working?
Great. They just don't put them in 87 passenger at the time.
How about, have you noticed any difference with the maintenance on, the wear and tear? It's a little early, doesn't it?
It's a little early, but they are cheaper to maintain for oil changes. They get about the same mileage as a diesel bus, which I was surprised by that.
Yeah.
The fuel is cheaper, and cheaper to maintain, so I think a normal bus would sit there a few.
How often do they have to fill up our tank down at the Chisholm? They just keep it, they just keep it full?
They just come by checking and keep it full.
All right, so there's no issues with that?
No.
All right.
What larger size bus they making?
They said a two right there.
Seven hundred.
They said a two right now. I'm trying to get them to put in an 87, let me pilot for them. Ain't talked into it yet.
So if we're buying buses that are 72 or lower, that they would buy throughout the year?
If we had to get special buses or 72 passengers from here on out, I'd probably go with propane.
Any questions, Mr. Gillyard? I want to thank Mr. Gillyard for what you do every day. It's a big operation. Buses over, probably 70 buses on the road every day, every morning. I know we transport 5,000 of students a day on the buses. A lot of moving parts that you try to wrap your head around, hard to understand. So thank you, Mr. Gillyard. I know he's always a go-to person when I have to call about weather, severe weather. We're usually on the phone pretty regular, so I appreciate what you do, Mr. Gillyard. You've got a lot of bus drivers, keep happy. Custodial services. We've been with our current provider of custodial services for going on four years. We've not been completely satisfied with the current vendor, so we put out an RFP to receive proposals from vendors. Our team here at the office, Dr. Banks, Ms. Yawn, and Mr. Spikes have reviewed the proposals. We received, how many proposals? Six proposals that were received and after going through a very laborious process to analyze each proposal, our team has come up with a recommendation for custodial services. It would be a new company. And you'll see, the company's name is Beck. And they are based out of Noonan, Georgia. We vetted all the proposals, but after, after, like I said, a lot of work that was involved, the clear number one proposal was Beck. It was really not even that close. And I'll let, Dr. Banks, Ms. Yawn, Mr. Spikes, any comments that y'all have about what you found?
What we did was, we advertised on March 19th, and we had a mandatory pre-proposal meeting at the high school on March 27th. And 12 vendors showed up that day to tour the high school. And we took them to the middle school. We also took them to Brockston so they could see a smaller elementary school. And we took them to Indian Creek so they could see one of our largest elementary schools. So they could ask questions, get familiar with our facilities. And upon that, we had six of those to come back and actually submit RFPs. So what we did was, we had six different categories. We evaluated them with qualifications, which we called references. And we looked at their background. We also looked at human resources, how they manage their employees with training and hiring and recruiting employees. We looked at their proposed staffing levels, what, how they were going to staff our schools, how their management worked, their wages for employees and their benefits. Next, we looked at the operations plan. How would they implement transition into our district? How would they work with us to do that? Then we looked at quality assurance. How would they work with our district as to reporting things that needs to be done in our schools and inspections and surveys so that we'd know that they are accomplishing, you know, what they need to do in our schools? And price was the last one. And we looked at total contract price, cost of supplies, and equipment. And we factored all those items together and Beck Education Services was to talk. We evaluated them out.
One of the, I would say, one of the other top vendors that I thought might be a little closer, one of the concerns we had there was the staffing levels and ensuring that we have adequate staff in the buildings. So that certainly was a positive with Beck, that they had adequate staffing in the schools. And another thing that we told them, when we met with them at the high school, we told them, or I told them, that number one, we want clean schools. We like shiny floors, we want clean windows, we want clean schools. We want stocked with supplies. And number two, we want to take care of the people that work for us, even though they're not our employees directly. They do work in our schools and they work with us every day. And so we were very clear that we expect them to treat our people well. And so when it was all said and done, we feel like Beck is going to do those things. They're going to provide us clean schools and then they're also going to move the current employees that are working for American Facility Services over into Beck. And it should be a smooth transition. Those that got on their pressure washing, are they in charge of outside bill as well? Michael, doing any of that?
Yes, as needed. I mean, yes.
I just saw pressure washing, that's why.
We can request it, but now the fronts of the entrance way to the schools, they are responsible for pressure washing and during the sun.
So when would this transition be?
June 1st. New company will be on the ground. They will probably come on in and set up their human resource office to start rolling the employees into their system. But the official start date would be June 1st.
And Dr. Banks, how you shared your concerns with being able to touch base with somebody in their management and that kind of being a revolving door, did you feel comfortable after?
Yes, I think they have a more concrete package. I think with the salary that they're going to offer the managerial staff, it will be more in line to keep us abreast to what they're doing at night. I think the problem with the cleaning is mostly from the afternoon hours up until the night. Supervision needs to be more specific. And we need to be out monitoring what they're doing in and out. And also they have a level person that will come in, I guess from a regional standpoint, that will oversee and look over things within 15 hours of the week to make sure everything's going the way it needs to go. But I think the problem we ran to previously was at management. And a lot of times when we look at management, we got to look at the real thing because we're keeping the same people, we're just changing the company. But when you change the company, they have to be more specific with their managerial protocol than what we've endured in the past. So I think if that piece is fixed, I think we will get better and I think our school will be cleaner. That's it, my opinion.
We did talk with a number of school systems. I know Carroll County Schools, I've always been impressed with their schools. They have around 20 buildings that they maintain and we're having real good feedback from Carroll County. Also McIntosh, while it's a smaller district over on the coast, Dr. Banks is home in town. It, y'all talked with the staff there at McIntosh County and they were very pleased with the service that they received. And also Washington County was very pleased with the service that they received. And one of our neighbors, Bacon County, uses Beck. And the feedback was very positive from Bacon County, so.
And I will say personally, when I did the local facilities plan at Bacon County, back probably the last part of, first part of this semester, when we went into one of the older schools in Bacon County, that school looked like it was jam-packed, new spots pretty much. And also the ambiance, when you walk through the doors, you can get a sense of smell of the school. It was actually engaging that it was clean. So I mean, I think that we going in the right direction with Beck, but time will tell.
And once again, I want to thank our staff or anybody working through that process. It's been a fairly complex process to work through, so thank you. Yes, sir.
If they approve, the board approves that at the regular meeting, that'll be settled to a contract be approved by you?
Yes, sir. That was my intent with this, that once the board approves this, that we'll go ahead and execute the contract. I was thinking you would give us permission to execute a contract with them.
To contract you with?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't put it together as far as I know.
2019, 2020 student handbooks. Dr. Banks has been working with principals on student handbooks. Any comments, changes, anything you care to point out, Dr. Banks?
We made some changes that I'd like to just point out if Chan scrolled that up just a little bit. One of the concerns from maybe at the higher level, the secondary level, was pertinent to dress code. So the first section there is student dress code. If you scroll up a little more, page four, so right there. I've actually highlighted the new parts or new additions to the handbook from last year to now. And we've actually scraped through some things that we're going to delete and take out. Also on the peach section there, we're going to delete that out of the handbook. And it's worded a little differently in another section. But these were some of the concerns from the secondary staff. And these are some of the additions that we have made that's new, is actually the highlighted area. And you'll see the first section there where it says appropriate dress promotes a more serious school atmosphere, emphasizes academics and promotes good behavior, et cetera. These are some of the things that was given to me from the staff at Coffee High School. Each year has its own uniqueness, but I think one of the main concerns this year that came out with dress code was holes in the pants or frays. And they're going to actually say that's not allowed going forward. And we wanted to put it in earlier because parents, when they get the norm as far as what's going on in our society, what's the latest fad or trends with dressware attire, I think if we give them an advanced notice that there's no holes or frays and just give them immediate feedback prior to them going to shop, doing their summer shopping before school starts in August, we think that would be better. Last year, what we ran into was parents went out and bought a lot of clothing for students and then they find out that they couldn't, the kids couldn't wear it at school. So we're trying to be more proactive this year in that capacity with the dress code. Any concerns from the board members or anything that you all may have heard or we need to look at more closely?
You can just clarify, then we, on number two, all shirts must be worn of appropriate length as collared shirt or polo shirt.
Collared shirt, in all, either all.
So Don, just a tee shirt that doesn't have a collar on is what you're, is how that was?
According to my understanding, now if you wear a tee shirt, I think that would be acceptable, but your undergarments cannot be exposed, you can't be visible. That's what I guess they're saying on certain sections of that. But you can wear a tee shirt.
But you could wear a Coffee High tee shirt, right?
Yes, yes, definitely, definitely.
That's a little confusing, maybe.
On number two?
Yeah. Because I, the way that I was questioning about it was that they always had to have a collar type shirt on.
So you might add in their tee shirts. Is that covered somewhere else?
And it may be in a different section and I just overlooked.
We'll just take collared shirt or polo shirt out. I'm sure it might be worn perfectly well.
Yeah.
Shirt to shed cleavage, miserable.
Right. Yeah, there you go. Just take that out. Yeah. Yeah, all shirts. We have administrative discretion in me.
Let me second say, well, Mrs. Jones.
Yeah, I just said they, administration's got leeway there. Put that out.
But I can modify that them two a little bit. Take that part out. That's no fault.
Make it clear that a tee shirt is allowed. Sweatshirts would be allowed.
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying, if you just say all shirts must be worn of appropriate length, period. Shirt should leave as miserable, leave that like that. Just take that collar off.
I think you might send everybody in a teaser that I'm going to wear a tee shirt.
Yeah, I think my child.
Because that's all that the children like.
Shirt with a collar on.
And I'm a tee shirt fanatic.
All right, great point.
That was all the question I had.
Is the pink, that's also new, the pink, not only the yellow, the gold.
That little peach color, that's going to be deleted out. That's going to be taken out completely. Because it's worded in a different way in another section or another. Just scroll up, Chan. Keep scrolling. I'm going to come to transportation. Right there, right there. Okay, within the bus situation, transportation, I talked to Mr. Gillyard earlier about this. We've been running into several problems this year with kids at the elementary level. Sometimes the bus driver would drop that kid off at his residence and there's no adult in the house for the kid. And that's very dangerous in the culture of times in which we live in. So we added from pre-K through third grade, bus drivers are not to allow students in grades pre-K through third grade to leave the bus unless an adult is seen by the bus driver at the residence. We wanted to put that in going into 19, 20 school year, just to pretty much let that statement be in there because sometimes things happen and parents read the book, the handbook, but some of those things that we have problems with, they're not in the handbook for that particular year. So moving forward, we want to make that addition into the handbook that we're not to allow a kid, especially a pre-K, first grade, kindergarten, first, second, or third grader to get off that bus without a parent being visible.
I think we'll want to, we'll want to, we'll want to, we want to certainly do that. That's something we've talked about administratively, I think, but.
Yeah. And book.
That's something our bus driver do now. We don't let them off that a parent is seen. However, they call us and, well, I've never seen that before. It's kind of gives us what they can stand on with us in our handbook.
So it's currently in practice?
It's currently in practice for drivers. We see something to stand on.
I know, my kids were at kindergarten, you had to be out, you know, long drive there.
Now, there is some spots where we can't see a parent because it's, you know, like Georgia woods, they just go like ends.
We'll need to work with that so we don't create a ministerial responsibility that could come back on some more employees. So we'll work on that piece. That was my concern when I read it like that.
But now we just keep them on the bus, you know, call the school and.
We'll come up with. I care about. Clean that up.
Well, I'd like to just say, if you add that in there and a bus driver does it, we could lose our immunity. And that, that way he could lose his immunity because that was a ministerial duty, he just had to follow the rules. If it's not in there, bloody, I know it's, Mr. Gillyard, it's easy for you to have something hanging, send them, tell them, but the rule is they got to have an adult there, but putting it in there.
We'll just have to look at that.
We can talk about it. Might give our insurance company some discomfort.
And see, it makes, we have several procedures in place within our school system, but it's not publicized for someone to read.
I know, but what, I just, the rule that Dr. Lacy said, we got something called ministerial, if you're supposed to follow the rule, you must come to the school between eight and nine. If somebody comes there at a different time, it wasn't where they had to be, get there whenever you think you should. We got discretionary things, we got absolute immunity. Can't sue the king. That's the issue.
Well, this come about on my driver committee, they kind of wanted this put in there. We were still going to do it, we're supposed to do.
We'll work on it.
Whether it's in there or not.
Yeah.
But it's kind of, they installed them out, they need to be in the book.
Well, what I think what he's saying is, you're saying the driver thinks that if we relieve them of some liability, he said it may add to.
Yeah. It'll ruin their day if they get sued.
I think we'll work on it, come back and something.
But I agree with Frank.
Oh, yes, definitely, definitely.
And if not, then that's just what we need to explain to them, that actually it's backwards, you know, it may provide more liability to the penalty.
We may need to have a meeting with them, explain it to them.
That's a good, good thing to have, though. I like this discussion.
That's good.
Just scroll. Keep wanting to yell at you. I think it might be on for a good night at the next. Yes. Some things coming from Coffey Middle School. Hold it right there.
All right, at the beginning, at the beginning of this school term, we have a procedure that we wanted to put in place where parents were not allowed to walk the students to the classroom after the first week of school. And some of the administrators wanted to have this actually placed in the handbook where their parents have to have an opportunity to reference what's going on as far as the new policy or the new procedure that we have in place. So that right there was put in this year, well, for next school term. Last year when we did, the principals actually just publicized it at the school to the parents during the first week of school, when we were going to actually make that change. This year they want to have it so they can reference it in already in the school handbook. And that's, and that's what we put in there right there.
Right.
Okay?
With that thought.
Oh, yeah. They say principals ask you. That's the rule. You can have that kind of rule.
Kind of that kind of.
The principal takes.
Idea. They took a lot of it, like we.
That's good.
But is that brief statement right there, is that okay to have? Does that find a way to word it? We had a different verbage that we had last year when we had the principal's revenue at the school. And I can share that right now if you want me to, but if you find that verbage right there is good enough, suffice to get the point across, we'll go with that right there.
Is that good? Do the principals agree with that?
They had seen that.
I would, I would say just with safety and priority in our schools, parents may not walk down students to classroom or down hallways after first week of school.
Several minutes worse than.
Yeah, yeah.
Put it up, Dr. Lacy. Don't put it up.
That's right.
Let's slip a candidate in.
Right here. These are some things that's coming from Coffey Middle School about the visor headband, sweatband. Also, some of these things relate to what's been going on at the high school, some of the headgear that kids were trying to wear at certain points of the second semester. A big concern that will be pertinent to all levels, elementary, middle, and high, will be the forbidden items pertaining to headphones or earbuds. Okay, the reason I say that is because some of the bus drivers want to use ear, uh, earbuds or headphones. Okay, so when we say forbidden for one level, are we saying forbidden for all levels? That would be my question.
But your bus drivers are using them to be hands-free, to be safe, and I have a problem with that.
Yeah, because the bus drivers are saying, when you're entering the bus or departing from the, off the bus, they don't want you to have any earbuds on.
You told my.
Student, student.
You don't talk to students. I'm not.
Okay, watch what I, okay, I got.
They don't want students to have earbuds entering, on, or exiting the bus.
As part of our PBIS yesterday, we discussed middle and high school can't have their phones and earbuds, headphones while traveling. But loading and unloading, they cannot. It's just a safety feature. And they started telling these kids, and I mean, those when I drove, the kids do take them out as they're getting on or off the bus. That process has already started, but when I drive, I kind of encourage them to listen to their headphones or something. They kind of keep them quiet.
Yeah.
So you're okay with while they're traveling?
Yeah.
While they're traveling, yes. Because, I mean, like that group went to Atlanta and played ball. I mean, I'm sure, I mentioned them had their earbuds and listen to music.
Yeah.
Now, elementary, no, they can't. With middle and high school, I don't have a problem with that.
I think that's a tough one to have in there. Because I, you decided to travel to a ballgame. I mean, it's fine for them to have their earbuds. You just talking about getting on and off the bus or the whole time they're traveling too?
They can't have them in, at least. One of them's got to be out getting off the bus or getting on the bus, crossing the road.
But after they get in there and sit down?
They can plug them in. Once they get past that driver's seat, they can plug them in. But once they get off the bus.
I think you just, that's not forbidden then.
I know, we need to clarify that.
Because that's just a management thing.
Well, it may be forbidden to school, though.
You got two continues here. Now, you got that school and you got the buses, just two separate, two separate things. You got the buses and you got the schools.
Did the schools want them forbidden in the schools?
Yes, I, it's definitely, definitely in middle school.
All right.
Yes. You have a different twist at freshman campus in Coffey High School.
Well, I don't know where at the, at the school where they use them as appropriate anyway. I mean, between classes or walking to classes, they need to be able to hear stuff. In their classes, they don't need them. Now, the bus, I assume we say in there, but.
They wear them in class.
They did before, before.
Can we not just do an asterisk, another asterisk there that says while entering or exiting a bus?
That's Google on buses.
I know, but.
We had a lot of students that opt to use their own earbuds in computer labs and when they're working on instructional software, for sanitary reasons, as opposed to the community headphones.
Unless otherwise restricted by.
Unless approved by a teacher.
A teacher or a.
I think they're on the forbidden list then. I think it's, I mean, if something's forbidden, it's not allowed, like explosive devices, firearms, knives, laser.
Forbidden list, but you need to put it somewhere in there.
Suburbage, right.
There are only allowed use of headphone or earbuds if approved by a teacher or a bus driver.
Hey, our PBIS metrics, isn't it going to be in the handbook?
Yes.
They say at the bottom, they say, let's say at the bottom, that headphone on headphone.
Talking about headphone.
I think they come off the forbidden list. Forbidden things are things we don't want anywhere in our schools or on our buses or anywhere.
Okay, I got it. Sister Robby, you right now then?
Yes, sir.
We can scroll on, Chan.
She need to cover something like.
Yes, sir.
And that's an adult thing too. So to start teaching them that in school is important because they get to the workplace and they want to wear them.
Thank you.
And this, this level one here, as far as the infractions that we have, Coffey Middle School wanted to put in there non-compliance. And they also want to take off chewing gum. They, they want to know whether we still enforce that, no chewing gum, et cetera. So I just scraped through that and say it will be at the teacher's discretion or the administrator's discretion at that school. I don't want to get too choppy on that with chewing gum. I mean, that might take up too much.
We have to take it off of the desk. It's been going. They could take mine out of the desk.
Well, there's.
Let me, going back to the headphones and earbuds, though, I'm of the opinion they all, they don't need to be worn while they're in the school building unless the teacher gives them permission to wear them. Is that what everybody here agrees with, sir? All right.
I don't think my old teacher.
Yeah.
I mean, I got kids going home. My teacher's sort of saying, but that teacher wears it with them.
But there's circumstance. That may be the math teacher that's only wearing them, but like he says, in the computer lab, she's fine with it. There's different circumstances.
I think we'd have some of the same safety concerns as just walking the halls with the earbuds in as you wouldn't walk the street, you'd be aware of what's going on.
Yeah, I don't want them wearing those things in the buildings, like when they're walking around.
And I think that's feasible to say because if you, I was at one of the schools in the intercom, mess was coming over intercom, and all the kids were walking. They couldn't hear what was being said. So that's, that's something to really look at.
Well, sir, somebody's got the board that they're not allowed unless approved by a bus driver. She's got the sense to tell you, yes, you can use them in my class. If not, then not.
Yes, sir. I agree.
I mean, we may come, I don't, I don't know. We may come back to the forbidden. I, let's, let's, if it's okay with the board, we'll talk with our principals about it.
And just figure out how to work.
All right.
Sounds good.
But it sounds like everybody's good with prohibited and their use for the most part.
Yes, sir. I think ninety percent of the time it should be. There, my chance, there may be some, there may be abuse circumstances.
It's like, they're doing for schoolwork is one thing, but just sit there and listen to them and not doing their schoolwork over that drive, you know, that.
Walking down the hall, they don't need to be listening to music, getting between the classes.
Scroll to level two.
Dr. Banks, you get that level one again?
Yes, sir, level one, huh? Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that's non-compliance with.
Behavior, not doing what you're right at school.
Yeah.
Basically.
Is that clear to y'all?
Non-compliance, to me, is like insubordination.
Did you refer the word insubordination?
No, no, I wouldn't want insubordination. That's a real serious one.
I was serious.
Level two, I'll tell you, please, level two.
All right, here, here's one of the, a major concern or something that really needs to look at, great attention, is with level two, when we talk pornography includes internet, Snapchat, Instagram, texting, self-news, et cetera. And Coffey Middle School wanted to know about a level three offense. Okay, the distinction between level two and level three is basically the consequence. At level two, you have suspension one to five days. Level three is an automatic three to five day suspension. You're looking at suspension time. But basically, one of the main parts of level three is always going to be at the administrator's discretion. When you analyze and look at the situation, what, what all took place with the Snapchat, how many people may be involved. It can get very, very, very blown out of proportion when you're looking at level two or level three consequence pertaining to technology, basically.
You know, I think that the idea of tobacco possession use have changed with the advent of this vaping and such, you know, and the whole tobacco, well, I mean, so the middle school was suggesting we move that to level three?
Yes, they.
I, I agree with that.
I think of middle school level and a high school, I'll, that's maybe a level two, but middle school, I can see that.
Why do you differentiate?
Well, because they're twelve years old instead of maybe eighteen years old. I mean, you know, there is a difference.
The older the wrong.
My thought would be in a no vaping.
No, no, no.
So you're saying, you're just saying the difference.
An eighteen-year-old, maybe it's a level two offense. A twelve-year-old, maybe it's a level three offense, you know, that's all I'm saying.
Majority of the high school isn't an eighteen.
They won't be. They asking for it to be level three?
Yes, basically.
I like moving it to level three.
I did too.
That's good. Keep scrolling.
And then the Snapchat, I think the pornography, the, the idea of that has changed because now when I see that, I'm thinking possibly somebody's own picture or so, whereas that used to be, you know, a magazine or something that somebody would have bought or gotten somewhere. Now you're talking about videos and really.
And a lot of that we pick up with Chan, who gagged.
Yeah.
If it's inappropriate using our.
Pornography in today's terms would probably warrant a level three offense now too.
Forty-three to live.
You know?
Well, we live in Coffey.
I agree.
All right.
I think it's, it's not, not a hundred percent this slide pertains to, talking about Snapchat, Instagram, and whatever else they've got there.
Facebook.
They don't do that anymore. That's not right.
Oh, how much policing of that are we as a school system going to be involved in?
I mean, if, obviously, if it's done at school and stuff, that's one thing, but, you know, now we get into where stuff done at home, but it's on Snapchat and then a parent sends it to you, you know, what, where, how much involvement are we going, we've got to say how much involvement we're going to have in some.
What, what has happened in situations, I would say just this semester, when we looked at it and looked at how it came about, we actually refer that through, Chris, there were law enforcement, we got law enforcement involved. And a lot of times what we do is we try to get an incident report with law enforcement, if it's happening outside of school. What the problem is that what happens outside of school, then they bring it inside school. And that's where we have to step in and make consequences from our, what our code of conduct really is for Coffey County schools. But when they, when they come and bring some stuff inside, then depending on how severe it is, that's going to determine whether it's going to be ten days pending or not. Sometimes it might be warrant three days to five days home suspension. And sometimes when it gets real, real blown out of proportion, becomes very, very level four infraction, that's when we get into ten days pending trial period. So we look at a lot of things that have happened. Is it causing harm to a child? Or is it, is it, is somebody bullying somebody, trying to intimidate somebody? Uh, there's a lot of things going on that you have to read into, and some of that, some of that stuff is above my grade grade. So I would say that we refer to law enforcement. And what, what helps at grade six to twelve is we have the SRO officer that's there as well, who can pick up some of the tasks, some of the things that the administrator is allowed.
I guess what I'm saying is if we got, and I'm just going, say, say student council is an extracurricular activity, and they've got a policy saying we expect our student council members, and I'm making this up, don't have student council, but maybe. We expect our student council members to abide by certain code ethics and you can't do that, and let's say like you can't, you know, you shouldn't be vaping and doing office, okay. And somebody sends a picture through Snapchat of the student council president vaping at a party somewhere, had nothing to do with student council, Coffey High School, whatever. You know, I guess what I'm, because that's, that's the responsibility. Is that our responsibility to police that? What they did last Sunday at somewhere with their friends, even though it's in our stuff, and somebody sent you a picture of that, how, how are we going to deal with it? How are we going to deal with it?
If it's in our stuff, we need to deal with it.
In our stuff as far as what?
As far as what the right, what's the criteria on that organization, student council is. If they got something written up in the student council and it pertains to a certain situation that happened outside and they're representing us with student council, then we need to take some type of action.
And that's the question I'm asking. That's what I'm asking. Because that's what, that's what we're getting into now. You know, well, we've got a set of rules at school that it follows rules, but now they weren't at school, you know, are we going to police that?
Because a lot of times we have that policy or we have that set up there as a, as a criteria, but we also have to keep in mind, we have future kids coming into that. So if we didn't do anything with that, then if something happens, the future kids come in, then we shouldn't do anything to them as well.
Well, and, and maybe when we write these, these things, whether the, whatever organization, they need to start including that. They look, even if it's off campus, if it's brought to our attention, you know, maybe that needs to be worded in there.
Yes, I agree.
You're going to get a teacher, they post a bunch of stuff.
I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's the, that's the change in the world we live in. You've got these, all these situations that are popping up and and, uh, sometimes I, I don't know, we've got to kind of believe in how we do it.
And, uh, and that, that's very bad because that's happening right now. That's happening.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's why I brought it up.
You know, we have it, as far as online activity and us having to address online activity, it's every day. Would, would you all agree, Dr. New, Dr. Banks, I mean, it's, 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 uh, and every situation is different. I would say to make one rule that's going to apply to every situation, that's very challenging.
Well, mine wasn't as much about making rules. It was just about where does our authority lie and how far out does that get?
The state decided about five years ago that even activity outside of the school that takes place via the worldwide web, if it's affecting the school, um, the school in some way, we, we can act, so. You know, years ago, we would say if something occurred outside of school on a computer or what, then we didn't, we weren't involved, but it's all pretty well come into the school's period, and that's what you would get.
And I was going to share with Mr. Lot, the flip side. The law requires there's got to be a connect, a nexus, any X U S connection. So if they, a teacher does something on her own time, uh, at nine, and it doesn't, uh, that's kind of on her own time. But it could affect her reputation and the situation in the school, that's different. The sexting and other things, when we say, you know, you can't do this anytime, then the flip side is, or is somewhere Mr. New required to go up there and watch all this, and we got to police everything. And if we didn't do it, we're responsible because we didn't say they did something. That's the flip side of, of saying going beyond something that really doesn't affect the school or there's not a nexus with school. But it's changing. It's, I mean, we know it, it's a different world. It won't be now the same it is today, it is next year. And, uh, but it's, uh, in the cases, the cases that come up in court are things that happened five years ago. And the ones that'll come up are things that happen today, and the, the courts are always behind. But the state board and Georgia law. But the state board and Georgia law has always been to have the nexus, and then the, the concern is, when we come up there and do something and say, we're going to, uh, we're going to require this, can't happen. Then are we responsible when it does, because we're supposed to police everything? It's complicated world, but you all know that.
And I think that needs to be, if, if that's what we're going to do too, we need to emphasize that to these kids, now look.
Yesterday night, take a picture doing something stupid, and, uh, somebody's mom gets all that and sends it to somebody next Thursday, you know what? Uh, you may not be on the soccer team next week.
I mean.
You know, you got to think of those things.
It's bad for, we know it now, then.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, 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 if the road we're going down, we need to start inside these kids, look. Better, you better not put it out there.
Somebody looking.
We need to make a question of whether that should be a level two or a level three?
Which one?
It should be level three, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we made that clear, because we agree with that.
And that's also with the, the vaping thing.
Yeah, I made a note, it's level three for, with tobacco and vaping, level three for hard.
Mm-hmm. Can you scroll on, I can. What I wanted to say that came up today, you look at level four infractions, administrator told me about, we got one extreme to the next, we got biting on one side, and then we got homicide all the way across, across the board. So, though, that's one thing that we will look at more closely when we come back the next time. Uh, but in closing, what I would also like to say, with the handbook, as I evaluated, looked at it, some of it is kind of choppy. I, I would like to propose, and you guys can, uh, let me know your thoughts, I would like to propose that if you, when we look at the handbook, at the beginning of the handbook, we put the general information in the handbook that pertains to all schools. Then we individualize the handbook, we go elementary, middle, and then high. Because sometimes, I think if a parent's looking for a certain section, they turn the handbook, well, it's chopped up in there. I think we need to specify more what's concretely elementary, what's concretely middle, and what's concretely high. The general information comes first, then we go into the sections of the elementary school, then middle school, then high school. That's, that's just something I would think would be more feasible for parents to be more engaged when they're reading the handbook. I, I feel they would be more user-friendly if it was proposed that way, or printed that way.
Well, you know, one time we had different.
Yes, we did.
We tried it after a while, it didn't seem to be feasible, but you know, if you're going to put it back in one, maybe, like I say, maybe break it up in sections.
Yeah.
Yeah, general handbook, and you have a specific section.
And that, that, that was my, my last conclusion for today, but I just want you to look at that, I guess, over the next month or so, and then we'll come back again with the, uh, the, uh, final revision, hopefully. If that's feasible.
Crazy that you actually have the homicide in there.
Well, I.
We could probably take that out, because if that happens, then they're not going to be. Yeah, I don't think so. Yeah, I think we can just strike that.
Let's finish two lessons, that'd be on for all of us. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, sir. Yes, we.
All right, I guess nothing is implied. Student handbooks, audience participation. It's not, so we have no audience participation. We will have to get to work on the handbooks though, because we need them done, we need them, board to vote by end of, end of May, first of June, to be read, go to print. Yeah, to go to print.
The next, maybe?
Yeah.
Beginning of May.
We'll have, we will have to have, and we didn't talk about this in the budget work session, Miss Young, we do need to set a date, so board members, if we can, look at the calendars for a, uh, in the middle of May, a, or towards the end of May, to have a, a call meeting to approve the budget. Because we, at, at the next meeting, we will have the second hearing, and then we will advertise the budget. After that meeting, and then we'll need to come back together.
Four days of meeting.
We need to have it at least two weeks after May seventh. So if we advertise it, then we'll run it, we'll run it in the paper on the tenth, and then what, the, what's?
The ninth, we can get it on the ninth and the sixteenth, or in the paper, say possibly.
It's got to run two weeks, doesn't it?
Two weeks, yes, sir.
So, we can get it in the paper for the ninth, if we have the board meeting on the seventh?
We may not be able to do that due to some.
I was thinking that week of the twenty-seventh through the thirty-first.
We probably need to run it sixteen, twenty-third.
Graduation is the twenty-fifth.
Yes, sir.
That Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, have like a noon meeting or a morning meeting, what would work better for y'all? Or an afternoon? Is there a day that week that we could? What, six a.m.? Yes, sir.
You wrote that that would work.
Yeah.
I would not do that, teen, I don't.
That meeting, there shouldn't, it should really, the only thing on the agenda should be the budget.
It's got to run, what the hell, for two weeks.
So if y'all, if we have the meeting on the seventh, and then after that, we can run it, but to get it in the paper.
It'll have, yeah, it'll have to run on the sixteenth, see in the twenty-third in the newspaper.
Yeah.
They would have enough time to get it in there, see on the ninth, for, for print.
Yeah.
Then on the twenty-fourth, Friday, everybody's going to graduate Saturday, so nobody's going to be gone.
Will that, will that meet the fourteen days?
We're talking about meeting, what day, that was like?
Friday, the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that should, that should.
You get it in there in a week, they're talking about meeting on.
It'll run on the sixteenth, and it'll run on the twenty-third.
On the twenty-third, so if you count that's.
I don't think that, I think you got to have two full weeks for it to run, so, really, I think to be, running that.
Twenty-seven, it's got to be run twice, got to be run twice before the, it's adopted, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So could you do it on the, could you do it on the twenty-fourth? The twenty-fourth, if that's all it is.
If it runs on the twenty-third, could you meet on the twenty-fourth? Oh, yes. Because you know everybody's going to be here, graduation Saturday, you get in a.
Hey, the paper comes out on a Wednesday with you, so, the twenty-seventh.
The date of paper will be the twenty-third.
Which is a matter I can run.
I think it's Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday or?
It's Wednesday now.
I thought.
Yeah, it's Wednesday now. We got to have the legal in there like on a Monday, no later than noon. Look, man, we're talking about Friday, so it's Wednesday, Thursday.
So if that's all it is, if it's just got to run twice, we could have it on the twenty-fourth then.
Well, that would keep, still be two weeks between the seventh and the twenty-fourth.
I'm just saying you know everybody's going to be here twenty-fourth.
All right.
I can't do it anytime by night. Could be figured out.
You will be good on the fifteenth and the twenty-second, I confirm that with trace as well.
All right, so we could have the meeting, we could have the meeting on the twenty-fourth, if y'all can do that. Would that?
I was going to say, graduate Saturday, so I don't.
But you would prefer a morning?
Well, I don't think, I think more this way.
It'd be very early.
We can really release that.
What, what does that mean?
We can do it early. What kind of?
Is there another reason?
What kind of we have to do it?
What time's practice? Eight thirty or something like that?
If we go, y'all, if we go to graduate practice.
Oh, you do it on?
Yeah, but I'm.
You've done it before.
Seven thirty?
I can easily do that.
Seven, seven thirty? Seven would be good, if that's good, that more y'all, a.m.?
Yes.
Seven a.m., yes, that would be, because we may have, we may have a little personnel to do too, so we may have to, because we've got.
Is that undue treatment to the audience in the?
The personnel's got to be done by the fifteenth.
Yeah, I know, we have, I'm just saying I've got some things that are going to be happening.
Okay.
Seven or seven thirty? Seven, seven?
I'm probably either one of you.
Good, all right, seven a.m. The, the.
Say you're going to be here.
After y'all verify a hundred percent that that date works, you're going to let me know in the month.
I probably don't know, but you will remind me.
It's seven a.m. on the twenty-fourth, that's great. Will that, uh? Yep. And then, if that date doesn't work, we'll let you know. All right, is there any other business? I would ask the board to move to an executive session to discuss personnel, and personally, I need viable student information, personnel information.
Regulation, we'll fix it to a regulation session.
Ready? Especially when you didn't see what I picked to do.